Deliver our invocation and then she is going to introduce a little special guest we have tonight and he is going to do our pledge of allegiance. So if you'd please stand at this time for our invocation.
Good evening. Join me with a word, please. You know that five years ago on this date, I think it's the same date, we were hit, Cumberland County was hit with a series of storms. And we had a lot of people displaced and a lot of money spent. So I just want to remind you of that. Heavenly Father, we come here tonight to conduct the business of the county and to look out for the benefit of, to benefit all of the citizens of our county and to do our best to make the kinds of decisions that will have long lasting and positive effects on our citizens. We ask that you remind us constantly that you should always be foremost in our thoughts. And Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for the privilege of serving with these six men that I consider my brothers and the privilege of serving the people in Cumberland County. Thank you for all that you have done and all that you will continue to do for us. Harvey, amen?
Amen.
Harvey, come forward, please. We're pleased to have Harvey Mitchell with us and he is going to lead the pledge. He's 10 years old and attends the fourth grade at Freedom Christian Academy. He enjoys reading, watching football, is spending time with his family. He has an older sister, Gracie, who's 11, who's also a fourth grader at Freedom Academy. He's here with his mother and father, Ian, and Renee Mitchell and his sister. Renee also is a Cumberland County employee. She works in the finance department here in this building. Now, sir, lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you come around, please? Start here. Shake it. I'm sorry, I forgot to.
Ready to go Harvey? Good job, bud. Group shot. Hold on.
You're doing a squeezy.
Harvey?
The rest of us won't fit.
Harvey, you don't mind your family comes in, Dave?
That's right. At your moment, you can let them in.
They're gonna eat after this, Harvey. What are we gonna eat?
Hey, you see anybody there, please, push them in.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. One more. Good.
You go Harvey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pull it up, bud. Thank you. Got it. Speaking to Jim.
This time we'll have a special recognition. I'd like to call on our FTCC President, Dr. Larry Keane and FTCC Board of Trustees Chairman, Mr. Ronald Crosby to handle a special recognition. Welcome, gentlemen.
Should we tell him you got an emergency?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Board of Commissioners. It's my distinct honor today to announce that our Board of Trustees actually last month made a decision to award an honorary trustee to Dr. Jeanette Council. And I'll tell you, I'm so proud of her. I've been in North Carolina for 16 years and when I was employed, she was on the State Board of Community Colleges at the time. Was always one of those trusted advocates you could go to and ask information and she would give you a straight answer. And I never dreamed I would be in Fayetteville, North Carolina and certainly in Cumberland County at the time, but I followed her all along. She's been a leader of this Board of Commissioners in many, many respects over the years. And so I could not be more pleased nor could we be more honored on behalf of our trustees and our college than to name you as an honorary trustee. Now, you had a bit of an emergency this morning when we, at lunch, when we actually did this and it was interesting. I wasn't about to let you out of that room too. We gave it to you. So you were, you were definitely surprised and honestly, I loved every minute of it because it was genuine. And so, Dr. Council, if you'd come down and let us present to you, on behalf of our board, Mr. Ron Crosby will read a special, what do you call it?
Resolution.
Resolution. A special resolution that depicts for our Board of Commissioners and all the guests today, what you've meant not only to this state, but also to Cumberland County, to Fayetteville, and to be frank with you, to me personally. You're a hero of mine. You always have been and you continue to do great things. And so, Mr. Crosby, if you would, please.
Resolution to honor the service and dedication to Fayetteville Technical Community College on the occasion of the designation as honorary trustee, Dr. Jeanette M. Council. Whereas for more than 50 years, Fayetteville Technical Community College has served the citizens of Cumberland County with access to high quality and affordable education that helps students become successful in their chosen careers. Whereas Fayetteville Technical Community College is the third largest community college in North, in the North Carolina Community College System and provides education to more than 40,000 students each year on a beautiful and diverse campus. Whereas the North Carolina Community College System and Fayetteville Technical Community College believe the road to economic vitality for the state of North Carolina begins at the doors of the state's community colleges. Whereas Fayetteville Technical Community College and serving its students is relying on donations from concerned citizens and appropriations from the state and county to address the needs of the college. Whereas Dr. Jeanette M. Council has served as a member of the State Board of Community Colleges from 1993 through 2005, including service as a member of the Finance Committee and a member and chair of the Personnel Committee. Whereas Dr. Council has served the citizens of Cumberland County, North Carolina as District One Representative on the, on the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners for four consecutive terms, including four terms as Board Vice Chair and three terms as Board Chair. And whereas Dr. Council has also honorably served in leadership roles in various community and business organizations throughout Cumberland County and the state of North Carolina, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees, in appreciation of the steadfast leadership and service of Dr. Jeanette M. Council to Fayetteville Technical Community College, Cumberland County and the state of North Carolina, hereby recognize her as honorary trustee of Fayetteville Technical Community College. As this special occasion is marked, may the service and dedication to others demonstrated by Dr. Council over the la, over the past years, serve as stepping stones of strength and joy to the years that lie ahead. Adopted this 16th day of April, 2018, Dr. Jane Larry Keane, President, Ronald C. Crosby, Jr., Board Chair.
Thank you. I have got to say a word. I was at a luncheon meeting today, a luncheon today, and got word that there was a, not only a fire, a house fire on my street, but there were several emergency vehicles in front of my house. And after I got about the second or third message, I was going home. But Dr. Keane wouldn't let me. He wouldn't let me leave. I was totally shocked and surprised. The, I don't know what I said.
Do we know?
But I do know that the niche that this college fills in our community serves a purpose that no one really can measure. You take the hopeless sometimes and give them hope. Because I've had too many people to go to school, even when I was teaching basic education. They, I don't know if you all know that, but I taught basic education for a while at night for people, grown people, who did not know how to read. And that was an amazing experience for me. I am proud of everything that you do and what this college does for the citizens of our area. What you do for economic development, what you do for high school students, what you do for the military, no one can measure. You are truly the wing beneath, the wind beneath our wings in the area that you serve and you lead North Carolina. If I get a chance and I didn't even know that this was happening tonight, I can make up some remarks that make sense, okay? But they keep surprising me with stuff. So, I'm sorry, but I love FTCC. It is just a marvel for me and I am grateful for this. You wait till I get home. I am grateful for this. I'm taking it. Thank you.
Well, Glenn, when she's still there, you want to read it or what?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for giving us this opportunity to recognize Dr. Council. And I'll tell you, it's truly heartfelt on behalf of our Board of Trustees, our faculty, staff and students, and the support that she and all of you give us. We do appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
May I have a picture with my brothers?
Come shake our hand.
Fifty years in education. Are you starting to want?
I got the walk of shame.
Walk of fame, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. You are great.
Since age one. Since age one.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Take one. One more. There we go.
She's got to keep us straight.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so very much. And I think that even, and I think Dr. Keane knows it going, but I will remark that, and I don't think they said it tonight, that they don't give out that award every year and basically give it out very, very sparingly. But Commissioner Evans is on the telephone. He could not be here, Dr. Council, Commissioner Council, so he sent a note for you that he wanted me to read. And it reads, "Congratulations on being appointed an honorary trustee of Fayetteville Technical Community College. I am truly touched that your outstanding contributions to Cumberland County were recognized in such a way and regret that I was unable to be there in person when this well deserved honor was conferred on you. This award is a fitting tribute to you and I cannot think of anyone who is worthier of such an honor. Once again, congratulations and continued blessings. Warmest regard, Charles Evans."
Thank you so much.
And I think Charles is on the phone and he just wanted me to read that and convey that to you.
Thank you, Charles. I counted you as a brother too, even though you weren't here.
Thank you.
I appreciate this. Thank you.
At this time, we have two more special guests and they do a lot of special things. Cumberland County Youth Council members. So Melissa and Jordan, how about front and center? Tell us a little about where you're from. Take good notes so you know what comes at the end of the meeting. So ladies first.
Hi, my name's Melissa Smith. I'm in 12th grade at Pine Forest High School and I'll be attending UNC Chapel Hill in the fall. And thanks. I've been in the youth council since May of last year and this is my second county commissioner meeting, so I'm excited.
All right. Jordan?
Yes, sir.
Let's hear it, buddy.
All right. Well, I'm also from Pine Forest High School and I'm also a senior. I know you guys like that. Fortunately, I won't be attending UNC. I'll be actually attending NC State.
There you go.
This is my fourth year in FCYC and I also serve on a board called National League of Cities and I work with a lot of national, what would you call them?
Delegates.
I guess delegates, yeah. And I'm excited to be here today.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, once again, to Cumberland County's finest, right here.
Thank you.
We also have some future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, in our midst this evening. I understand they are from 71st High School, Future Business Leaders of America. Where are you and would you please stand up to be recognized? Would either or both of you like to make a few comments about FBLA? Are you okay where you are?
We're okay where we are.
Well, how about standing back up and with, with the college tradition, you've heard NC State and UNC. Where are you two going to school?
Well, actually, sir, I've been on, attending Fayetteville State University.
Okay, good deal.
All right, bravo!
Gotcha. What about your colleague?
Well, I'm in, I'm a freshman.
That's okay. That's okay. Gotcha. You'll be ready.
She's still ready.
Okay, good for you. Good for you. Good for you. At this time, I'd like to call on our Assistant County Manager, Sally, and she is going to recognize our Cumberland County Citizens Academy graduates at this time. Thank you, Sally.
Good evening. On March 27th, 29, Cumberland County residents completed the County Citizens Academy. We invited the graduates to attend tonight's meeting to be recognized for their participation in the program and for their desire to gain a better understanding of county government. So these participants completed six consecutive Tuesday nights. They heard from 27 different county departments and they visited various county locations such as the Ann Street Landfill, the Sheriff's Training Center, Crown Complex, the courthouse here, and Department of Social Services and the Historic Courthouse. This is the 10th Citizens Academy class and there are now 260 graduates. Public Information Specialist John Soules coordinated the academy with the help of Claudia Severs and Janine Mankel. So as I call your name, please stand up and at the end, you'll move forward, shake the hands and we'll get a group photo of the entire class. Frederick Barber.
He's not here.
Cedric Bland. Tammy Batello. Tammy is a Cumberland County employee. She works with Tax Administration. Marie Calendar. Clyde Cobb. Stanley Ford. Mr. Ford was here with the group from 71st. Bradford Gaddy. Yolanda Gayler. Betty Glenn. Deidra Hadley. Deidra is a Cumberland County employee with the Department of Social Services. Gary Horn. Antonio Jones. Bernard King. Diane King. Angela Leonard. Wanda Lewis. Charday Lewis. Cory McBride. Toni McKinnon. Danine Morton. Christopher Nelson. Sonia Oates. Sharon Sanders. Barry Simmons. Larry Smalls. Wilbert Stokes. Westana Williams. Mark Yarborough. Luciana Yarborough. That's our class. Now we'd like you to move forward, shake the commissioner's hands, stay there for the group photo. John will get that.
Once again, keep on graduating. Keep on graduating. Jeanette signing autographs. Anybody want a picture with Glenn? Good to see you again, partner. Good to see you again, partner. Well, you just keep on graduating.
The thing she has to go through, she's the only girl in the locker room, it's scary for her.
Okay.
You too. Okay, I'm good. What happened to my thing? Where's my novice agenda?
You know me now. I like to shake a few hands. Let's shake a few hands.
What did I do? Oh, okay.
Again, our friend.
I'm a fifth student and I listen to my friends and sisters.
71st. 71st. One, two, three. One more. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sally, it's still you.
What happened to novice agenda? The Public Information Office partnered with Methodist University through an educational affiliation agreement to offer a videography internship during the spring 2018 semester. And tonight, we would like to recognize Cheryl Lynn Rios, a senior graduating in May from the Mass Communications Program for her contributions to the county's communications efforts. So Cheryl Lynn, she's on the very back row. Please come forward. Cheryl Lynn worked 90 hours in the Public Information Office and in exchange, she earned academic credit of 30 hours, internship hours, through the university's internship office. From concept development and script writing to filming and editing, Cheryl Lynn created videos for the following county departments: Tax Administration, Emergency Services, the Health Department, Cooperative Extension, and Animal Control. And these videos are appearing on FCE TV and on our county's social media platforms. I'd like to take a moment and recognize Robin Davenport. Robin is the Associate Director for Internships and Employee Relations at Methodist University. And we would like you to take just a minute to see some of Cheryl Lynn's work. This is her most recent video.
My name is Anna Faircolton. I am a shelter attendant at Cumberland County Animal Control. Anyone can come down to the shelter and adopt. You just have to be 18 years old and have your state ID. In order to adopt a pet, there's a form you have to fill out. You just have to sign an adoption contract. Our adoption fees range from 68 to 83 for adopting a cat and 86 to 117 for a dog. Included in your adoption fee is a spay or neuter, rabies for one year, a microchip, first set of vaccines, and your county license if you live within Cumberland County. Although is included in our adoption fee, after the first year, you will be responsible to have your animal vaccinated against rabies and have a current county license. Some of the animals we have available for adoption include dogs, cats, rabbits, deer, and swedenham reptiles. Sometimes farm animals, if they come into us as stray, have to go to auction first, but if they're already secured to the shelter, then they can go to adoption. Before you adopt a pet, you can always come down to the shelter and meet with them. You can play with them in a bonding room or take them out in the yard. If you have any other pets at home, we recommend that you bring them in for a meet and greet before you decide to adopt. Once you choose your pet, you will not be able to take it home that day if it's not already spayed or neutered. You'll choose your vet from a list of vets that we are contracted with. After the procedure is done, you would pick up directly from the vet the next business day. Included in the adoption fee is the first set of vaccines. Beyond that, they will Beyond that, there would be booster vaccines, so you would have to contact your vet to set up an appointment for those.